Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It is great to see you. Welcome to the April 21st, 2022 special meeting of the Board of Education. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anthony.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Onsal.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Rolowitz.
Here.
DeTarrick.
Savage.
Here. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public?
There are none.
There are no comments from the public? All right. Well, then I have a few things to say. We're Evanston Strong, and it is truly a great day to be a Wildcat. The ETHS School Board is proud to announce the appointment of Dr. Marcus Campbell as the next superintendent of the Evanston School District 202. Dr. Campbell's first day as ETHS superintendent will be July 1, 2022. The Board is finalizing the contract and intends to approve it at the May 9 meeting. Dr. Marcus Campbell has served as the Assistant Superintendent slash Principal at ETHS since 2013. In this role, he served as the Educational Leader and Chief Administrator of all school operations at Evanston Township High School and has been responsible for implementing and managing the policies, regulations, procedures of the School Board of Education to ensure that all students are educated and supported in a safe, equitable, culturally relevant, and student-centered learning environment. As the Assistant Superintendent of 202, Dr. Campbell has been responsible for providing leadership in the development of district strategy and organizational change, including effective instructional practices, impactful diversity and equity initiatives, and the Board's Equity and Excellence Mission Statement, and oversees the implementation of all districts' equity transformation programs, training, and initiatives to help improve the overall school culture for all students and to eliminate barriers to the equitable education of students from underrepresented backgrounds. His goal has been to effectively engage students, staff, parents, and the Board, as well as members of the community, and clearly articulate the goals and priorities of the district and build the support for the district's mission while increasing pride and trust in the school. Dr. Campbell earned his EDD -- that's his doctorate -- in educational leadership at National College of Education, National Lewis University. He also holds an MA in Social and Cultural Foundations in Education from DePaul University and a BA from the University of Illinois at Champaign with a major in English and minor in African-American Studies. Dr. Campbell will be the first African-American male superintendent in the 139-year history. Yes, 139 years. This is a historic moment for ETHS and our community as a whole, and we are very excited to acknowledge and celebrate that history. And I can't think of no one better to make history than Marcus Campbell, who is an exemplary and compassionate educational leader. He has a list of accomplishments and awards that would take me all night to read, so I'm going to refer you to the website for more information. This announcement concludes the six-month Board-led search process. It was essential to this Board that we engage the community in the selection of our next superintendent. We selected the Alma Advisory Group because they share this value and they developed a thorough process to hear from our stakeholder groups. Students, parents, faculty, staff, and community leaders were all included. Our community told us what they were looking for in the next superintendent, which allowed us to develop the position description and articulate the competencies our community was looking for. Members of our community then conducted several hours of extensive interviews with Dr. Campbell. Excuse me. We received overwhelmingly positive feedback on Marcus Campbell as the next superintendent. We had almost 40 participants in the panels and written feedback from the survey that went to the panelists after over 100 were nominated to participate on the panels. We, as a Board, pored through the interviews as well as the feedback and information we received from the community, panels, and focus groups. The support for Dr. Campbell was compellingly positive. This is a sample of what we heard. "I trust this candidate and believe he would be best -- the best fit for superintendent at ETHS. He has the most experience and perspective and is already headed in the right direction." Another comment. Excuse me. "I just left the conversation with the parent and community panel. The room was filled with hope, energy, and promise. I could not imagine a better candidate -- thank you -- to lead District 202 as the next superintendent." Another comment. "Dr. Campbell is thoughtful, engaging, and clearly is dedicated to the success of Evanstonians and the ETHS community. He is experienced with the nuances of the institutions and with the community at large and understands that there are some needs for which specific plan does not yet exist. My impression of him is that he understands the complexities of achievement and the obstacles to achieve, particularly in Black and Latinx communities, and he is willing to be creative and strategic." Last comment. "Dr. Campbell demonstrated that he is a leader who is responsive, receptive, and vulnerable. During the interview, his answers were thoughtful, and he provided enthusiastic responses to difficult questions. He clarified his position and gave us an insight into his decision-making process. He seems very dedicated to continuing to hold the faculty and staff accountable and as a part of the conversation when any new policy or procedures arise." I am so happy and honored to make this announcement. I want to tell you that representatives from the Alma Advisory Group were not able to be here tonight, but they sent something for me to read to you. Monica Santana Rosen is the CEO of Alma and unfortunately is traveling, but she wrote, "The Alma Advisory Group is grateful to have supported the Evanston Township High School's Board of Education for the new superintendent search, led by the voices of the students, parents, and staff who clearly articulated their desires to ETHS's future. With intentionality, throughout every step of the process, the Board landed on today's historic decision to hire Dr. Marcus Campbell. Dr. Campbell is the district's first male Black superintendent and a longstanding ETHS leader. He has demonstrated to the community interviewers that he had the skills, dedication, and leadership needed for ETHS's next chapter. We applaud the Board for engaging in such an inclusive and transparent process, and we look forward to watching the wonderful things that Dr. Campbell and the ETHS Board and community will build from here. Dr. Thank you for your patience with me. As you could tell, I am struggling a little bit with the cold, but I was determined to be here. So I will now entertain comments from my Board colleagues, starting with the Vice President, Monique Parsons, and then we'll just go around the horseshoe, and then we'll end with Dr. Witherspoon.
So I want to be quick and to the point so you can celebrate this moment, and I'm emotional, but I'm going to get through this. It is so true. God is amazing. It is so true that we chose you. Well, we hired you. We're hiring you to be the superintendent. What's also true is that your path was chosen a long time ago. And so while we are responsible for doing this and putting you in this role and supporting you along the way, your steps were already ordered. And it is just amazing to watch you lead and to receive the feedback that we received about how ready our community is, but more importantly, how ready this Board will be to support you. And I stand behind that, and you know I will, because you are so deserving, you are so loved, you are so ready for this role. And I am so honored to lead alongside you. I can't wait, because this is -- the thing is, the community has yet to see your brilliance. And I'm so excited. I'm excited for you, but I'm more excited about what this means for our children and our community. And I hope they understand how wonderful and how amazing this decision is. So that is what gives me joy. I'm overjoyed. I couldn't sleep last night. You know, that I have been put in a position, along with my colleagues, to support you and bring you forward and now allow you to lead if it were not for Eric Witherspoon, right? Who opened the door and allowed this to happen. And so I am so ready for whatever will come. And know that the best is yet to come. So congratulations, and get ready. It'll be June before you know it. Get ready.
July.
July. Is it July or June? It's today. It actually starts today.
Well, I just wrote down a few quick comments, and I'm going to be brief too. There are so many terrible things going on in the world right now. The war in Ukraine, violence against Black LGBTQ people, the climate crisis, attacks on public education. So it is such a great thing to be here on this warm and sunny day in Evanston to celebrate this good news. I arrived on the Board some 13 years ago, shortly after Dr. Witherspoon got here, and I've served with many different Board members over the years. All of them, even if not part of this particular decision, had a role to play in what led us here by their leadership on this Board. As I'm sure everybody watching today knows, Board members don't always agree on everything, but we can learn from one another, we can come together on the big things, because our shared values and desire for what is best for this community and our students drives us. Dr. Campbell is the best example of this kind of coming together. I have every confidence in him. I look forward to working with him. And as my fellow Board members know, I'm not a fan of long meetings, and there is more to be said here tonight, so I would do my best by concurring with what I'm sure will be said and not repeating more. I'll wrap this up now with my very best wishes to Dr. Campbell and his family on this historic day. Thanks.
I didn't prepare any remarks, but I just want to speak from the heart and just tell you that there are people that you meet who become very special to you in your life and in your path, and I find that those people, I always remember the first day I met them. And you are one of those people. I don't think I was on the Board yet, but I am a parent of a recent graduate. I got to know you a little bit better since then. I've enjoyed our text exchanges and our little aha moments, and I've enjoyed watching you come along on a path that I know you've been on for a very long time. I'm delighted to be sharing at this time and space with you here finally. I'm just overjoyed, and I'm so grateful to be part of this process with such wonderful colleagues. I'm learning so much from all of you, and I know that we'll continue to have a robust and stimulating and deepening relationship with you, and you can be assured of our support. I was so impressed during the interviews with your metaphor for the windows and mirrors, because I think it speaks so well to the kind of person you are, the kind of leader you will be. You're truly a self-reflective individual, and that comes through in your work and how you speak and how you interact with people. You're thoughtful and you're mindful. And you are also very dedicated to this work. That's clearly -- that's clear to us, your commitment to what you're doing. You're proximate. You're going to be a very proximate leader, and you're going to be an inspiration to so many people and to so many students, and I'm just grateful to be in this place with you all now and with you in particular, and excited to help you on this next journey. So, thank you.
Okay. Hello. I know Marcus is like, "What's she going to say?" I'm just going to tell you one, that I do love you, and I think that this is amazing. Monique said, you know, "This is an honor," and I support that and feel that at 100%. Your brilliance has been something that I've been able to be a part of for many years. What I think is most advantageous for every student and adult in this building is that you're a futurist. When I think about the work that you did prior through your dissertation and through your -- just the programs that you've talked about, that you've done and given to the school, they were ahead of the time. And so there's something in this moment about you entering into this role as we come out of or through or continue in this pandemic, where I think that time has stood still for a second. And so you, as a futurist, entering into a moment like this gives everybody a moment to pause and catch up. And I just believe that our community is ready to catch up to you. And to be in this position is -- I just feel like you've given me a gift, so I want to say thank you. And I'm ready to represent and to be on this Board. I was looking for a quote or things that could capture what I'm feeling about this moment, and I'm just going to say there's nothing. And so I'm going to just tell you thank you again.
Thank you to everybody who came out tonight to join us on this momentous occasion. I love seeing you all here. Marcus, I did write something up, so I didn't forget everything. Marcus, I am so proud to be sitting here with you tonight as you're being named Superintendent of Evanston Township High School and as the first African-American male superintendent in the school's 139-year history. The historical significance of this moment is profound and something we should all take a minute to really absorb and ponder. Your being in this position will leave an indelible mark on our students, teachers, staff, admin, and community members. You will be an inspiration to many because you already are. I am overjoyed for the students who will have the privilege of attending ETHS under your leadership as superintendent. I am excited to watch you craft your vision and push ETHS to its maximum potential, and you will have enormous support while doing it. Many of us have been privy to your work, the work you have done at ETHS over the last 20 years. I had the privilege of getting to know you better during the seven -- over seven hours of interviews that you participated in for this process. The Board learned about your goals for ETHS, your deep knowledge in education and your students, and about you personally. I was struck by your thoughtfulness and introspection and the impressive amount of personal work that you have done and continue to do. This is a quality of a true leader, someone who understands the influence he has in the ecosystem of the high school and the community, someone who can receive constructive feedback and use it to improve himself, and someone who has empathy and understanding of those that he works with and leads. Your personal work and your professional work is what brought you here today. We sent out surveys to the community, teachers, staff, admin, and students, and their responses were overwhelmingly supportive of you being chosen to be our next superintendent. Our community knows you, and they support you. Our superintendent search firm, the Alma Advisory Group, commented to us that they had never seen such positive feedback on a candidate, especially someone who has been with the institution as long as you have. That is something to be proud of and evidence of your strong leadership so far. Marcus, you asked us how we will support you as the first Black superintendent at ETHS. The answer is, we will support you and empower you to lead, make decisions, and implement your vision. We will continue our important Board work focused on equity and anti-racism, and we are now telling our community that in you, we have found the most qualified, perfect-fit candidate for superintendent at ETHS. I have the utmost confidence in and admiration of you, and it's been an honor to help facilitate bringing you here today, and I look forward to working with you for many years to come. Congratulations.
That's what it says at the top, with lots of exclamation points. "Congratulations, Marcus. You've been working to get to this point for a long time, and I can't wait to see where you lead ETHS from here. You are an incredibly special person and leader, and I too am very honored and humbled to be part of this process and to have the privilege of working with you. We met a very long time ago, early in your time at ETHS, around 2003, 2004. I was doing work to support ETHS and MSAN, and Laura Cooper, the former Pete Beavis, introduced us. Pete's not here to get that. But even before her introduction, she told me about you. Laura said, 'Watch him. He has a deep understanding of instruction and the importance of educating and supporting teachers in the teaching and learning process in order to affect real and meaningful change.' He's a leader." And boy, was Laura right. She's usually right. And since then, I've had the privilege of watching you grow and deepen your leadership. From AP English teacher and Director of Avid to Assistant Superintendent and Principal, you have shown your gifts and abilities as a superior educational leader. I especially love how you tackle big issues by digging deep into the specific, what I call peeling the onion. You look at the data and the experiences of a small group of specific students to better understand an instructional practice or policies impact, and then using that information, that specific information, to address the bigger problem. I believe this is a unique and key component of our equity work at ETHS and one you have used to make systems change and to support all of our students. In addition to all of the brilliance you bring to the job, you also bring an unbelievably kind and big heart. You extend your kindness and grace to people at all times, especially in challenging times. Many parents over the years that you have been principal have told me that their child was really struggling and needed help but wasn't sure where to go, so they went to you. And despite how busy you were, you stopped what you were doing, you listened to them, and you figured out what they needed, who they needed to talk to, and you got them there. We have nearly 4,000 students in this building, and I think most of them know that about you, that you will listen and you will help. That's a pretty amazing thing, and I believe it's what will ground you as superintendent. 16 years ago, the ETHS Board was called upon to do something big, really the most important job a Board has, to hire a new superintendent. And how lucky are we that they took that job very seriously and made the decision to hire Eric? And now it's this Board's turn to step up and make a decision that will impact this community and our students for years, and I hope many years to come. Hiring you is historic and the absolute best hire for the success of ETHS and our students. I couldn't be more confident in our decision, Marcus, and I know you will build the great -- you will build on the great foundation of work to ensure equity and excellence for everyone at ETHS. Thank you for accepting our offer, and thank you for all you have done and will do for our students. It's going to be quite a ride, but know that I, the rest of this Board, and so many others at ETHS and in our community are in your corner and here to support you. Congratulations, my friend.
Amen to all that. Because I have really had the opportunity to work closely with Marcus all these many years, and you all have a right. I recognize the man, the professional, that you're talking about. I can honestly say that tonight, knowing that Marcus Campbell will officially be succeeding me as superintendent, is a dream come true for me, Marcus. I recognized and saw in Marcus, when he was in his 20s, a future superintendent. And I won't recount some of the specific stories, but we've talked about them. And Marilyn Madden, who was his predecessor and one of his mentors, Assistant Superintendent and Principal, was here when I arrived. And Marilyn is in the room this evening, came here from Atlanta, because she too saw in you a future superintendent. And over the years, you have, from that English teacher that you were when I arrived, to that AP and that teacher and that Avid director and to Associate Principal and then to Principal and Assistant Superintendent, you have moved through the ranks. And I know that in my mind, that is the way to prepare to be a superintendent. Start as teacher and move through the ranks. Get all that experience. But what was so much fun all these years with you is there was such an intentionality that you were preparing to be a superintendent. And my dream, and actually I believe it was your -- I know it was your dream too, is it would be here. And you have done everything to be prepared for this role. And I have all the confidence in the world that I've always believed that a new superintendent And I have all the confidence in the world that I've always believed that a new superintendent coming in needs to be able to embrace the vision and the mission and the challenges of the district and then take that district to the next level. And oh my, you're going to take this district to the next level. And I am so happy and so proud of you and so thrilled for this school and this community. Congratulations, Marcus.
So before we allow you a chance to comment, Marcus, there's something that you said to us in the interview, and I'll just explain this a little more because I realize that most people in this room weren't at that interview. It's the board. And we asked you about board-superintendent relationship, and you said, you said some great things, but one of the things you said is that you believed in a team of eight, seven board members and a superintendent. And that really stuck with us. So we have, we have a little bit of a surprise for you. So we invite you, Marcus, to make any comments that you would like to make. If you want to, it's up to you.
Well, good evening, and I guess, you know, what we say in the Black church, "I'm full." I am just honored, thank you to the board, thank you, Madam President, thank you to Eric. I am just humbled to be seen and to be recognized and affirmed in such way, even after being here for 21 years. And sometimes you're an internal person, you know, people know all the stuff because you're here every day. And I'm just honored that my colleagues and that you would continue to see me to further lead and lead in this way. So I am just so grateful. To my family and my friends, thank y'all for being here. I've been thinking about my mom all day. I've always imagined that she would be here in the moment if it ever happened, but her knowledge is complete, and her spirit and the spirit of my father, you know, continues to reside in me. Pastor Cherry, I was sitting over there tearing up and crying out of one eye. That's something my dad always did. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the community, thank you to the students, thank you to the teachers and staff and everyone for allowing me an opportunity to serve in this way. And I am looking forward to EHS in the years to come and continue to be the leader, the national leader that we are, setting the standard, leading the way, innovating that we're all students and high schools and districts all over this country can continue to learn from us. So it is a great day to be a Wild Kid, Eric. Thank you very much.
So there are just a couple people in the audience that I'd just like to hear from. I know that Pastor Neighbors walked in, Pastor Cherry is here, and I just want to invite you to the podium if you have a few words to share, you know, and because they're pastors, I know they always have a few words to share.
Yes, good evening, everyone. What a wonderful and remarkable moment we are experiencing now, an amazing moment in history. We are grateful for the incredible work that Dr. Eric Witherspoon has done over the long haul of the years here, and to see a seamless transition, to experience the amazing adulation that Dr. Witherspoon is giving to Dr. Campbell, it doesn't happen like that all the time, especially in education where sometimes things can be very, very competitive. So when I think about this moment, I wrote a letter, and Dr. Campbell, I wasn't able to attend one of those community gatherings, but I wrote a letter, and a brother that can really write a letter, that's a good thing. And so I hope that the letter went very well, but I want to share with you that I was going to read part of that letter tonight, but I don't think I'm going to do it. When I was coming over, I thought about a few things in history, right? This is a historical moment for Evanston. And I thought about, I thought about ancient Athens, and I thought about those amazing philosophers that walked through that city 300 years before the birth of Jesus. I thought about Socrates, who taught Plato, and Plato, who taught Aristotle, and I thought about the academy that actually began our understanding of Western education as we know it. And then I moved on and thought about Alexandria. And Alexandria, Egypt, had the world's greatest library at a time that was just incredible, 2,000 years ago. And out of Alexandria, we came forth amazing people like Augustine from the Christian Church, but also the world's first amazing woman Western philosopher, Hypatia. If you haven't heard of Hypatia, you have to look her up. And then I decided to come closer to home because, you know, some folks are just bored with history, right? So I decided to come closer to home, and I thought about Morehouse College and its influence in Atlanta, especially for Black men, and Benjamin E. Mays, who was at the helm of that institution for so long, Mordecai Johnson, who was the president of Howard University in many of its pivotal years, and Dr. William Harvey, the nation's longest-tenured president of Hampton University, who just announced his retirement a couple of weeks ago. I thought about our own Northwestern University and Melville Heskowitz, who was a white Jewish guy but ended up knowing more about African culture than anybody on earth, and there's a library over there named after him. So I put all of those together, and I thought to myself, "Well, look, what do we have at Evanston Township High School? What do we have at District 202? We have Dr. Marcus Campbell, who is going to leave a mark on this community and leave a mark in this school that eyes have not seen and ears have not heard what glorious things are in store for the folks who believe in Marcus, who believe in this team of eight, and who believe in District 202. Congratulations, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Good evening to the board, Madam President, to all of you that are here. Marcus, thank you, Dr. Neighbors, for that walk down history. Therefore, I don't have to stand before you as Pastor Cherry tonight. I get to stand before you as Kenneth Eugene Cherry. I only make that reference to my middle name because I'm named after Marcus' father, who decided to put his name on me. Thank God for that. And today, I stand as your cousin because the ancestors are happy today. The family is happy today. The ancestors are smiling. Your parents are smiling. It's a good day for our family, a good day for you today, a good day for Evanston. And now, we get to experience all of this greatness together. God is so good and so much God that he gives us this opportunity to experience things together that as this board has come and been a tool of God's grace, been a tool of the steps being ordered, as this board has done this, as this community stands and are now benefactors of the steps of a man being ordered by the Lord. I am a Baptist preacher, forgive me. As all of that works together, God promises us that all things work together for the good of those that love the Lord. So not only does it bless our family, not only does it bless this community, not only are your parents smiling, but today, God has smiled on you, God has smiled on your children, and we all can celebrate together, and we thank God for this opportunity together, and we look forward to all that God has gifted us with through you. God bless you, man, love you.
And now I'd like to invite Marilyn Madden to the podium. Marilyn came all the way from Atlanta, and it's really a special treat to have her joining us.
I'm gonna start crying. Marcus is my son. I know he has a birth mother, but he is my workson. When I first, I've had many jobs here, but when I became assistant superintendent principal, I had the wonderful opportunity of working with Eric Witherspoon. And he, any ideas I had, he let me do it. He let me run with it, and I love him for that. And I presented in front of the audience of teachers and service workers, we had one of those big staff meetings. And I said, "Listen, I really want to do these programs for the students in the community, and I need some of you to step up and work with me. Do you know who the first person was that came to my door? It was Marcus Campbell." And it's been a love fest ever since then. Because I could call on him, I could ask him to do whatever, and sometimes he didn't like it. But what would I tell you, Marcus? Just do it. And because you would just do it, you are here today. You are such a wonderful inspiration for this community. And it just warms my heart that I'm here to see it, that I had an opportunity to work with you. You did the AVID program, I was supervisor of that, and you did a wonderful job, and it's just gone on and on. So I don't want to get too heavy because I really will start crying, but I am just so happy for everyone here, and thank you so much, board, for selecting this young man. I don't think you'll be sorry.
Well, once again, I want to thank all of you for coming. We are still officially in a meeting, so can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is officially adjourned, and please stay around and enjoy some cake and congratulate Dr. Campbell.
Party, Tom.